Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June meeting of your Lewisville Town Council. Thank you for joining us in the chambers tonight. Good to see familiar faces. Hope you're enjoying us. Hopefully, you'll enjoy us watching at home on TV 6 or on our Facebook post. It's important that we, that you join us. Tonight's a big night. We've got a lot of issues that are going to come forward to council. And obviously, the big one is the approval of our budget for next year. So, thank you all for joining us. We'll start with our customary roll call of council members.
Ivan Huffman, thank you all for being here. I appreciate it.
Happy Thursday evening. My name is Melissa Hunt.
I'm Mike Horn.
I'm Ken Sadler.
Evening, Jane Welch.
Good Thursday evening. I'm Monte Long.
Very good. And Councilwoman Puckett called earlier today, and she is experiencing some illness, so she won't be with us tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join us, please, for our invocation led by Councilmember Jane Welch, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able, please stand and join us.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity of this town and this council. Thank you for the blessings. Please guide us, as always, with our decisions, that we seek what's in the best interests of our citizens. Protect our youth now that the summertime is here. Help them have a good summer, but a safe summer. Pray for us and the whole world to remove hate. Protect our men and women of the armed forces and all those innocents that are caught in between. We ask in your name, and please bless our beloved Lewisville. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, we've got a weighty agenda tonight, so Ms. Manager, you're up.
All right.
Oh, let me hold on real quick. I do have a couple of changes. Councilmembers, we need to add, on your agendas for this evening, we need to add under new business, we need to add a P, Q, R, and S. And all of these are related to our property acquisition that we'll be talking about in more detail in a little bit. Madam Clerk, any other changes or revisions?
No, sir.
If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve, adopt the agenda for this evening.
So move.
Second. Ms. Walsh makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Now, we're set to go.
All right. Tonight, on our consent agenda, is Resolution 2024-025, the financial statements for the 10 months ended April 30th, 2024. Approval of budget workshop minutes for April 18th, 2024. Approval of budget workshop minutes for April 29th, 2024. Approval of agenda briefing minutes for May 2nd, 2024. Approval of closed session minutes, May 2nd, 2024. Approval of regular meeting minutes for May 9th, 2024. Approval of closed session minutes also for May 9th, 2024. Approval of budget workshop minutes for May 13th, 2024. Ordinance 2024-011, that was amending the budget ordinance 2023-001 for Jack Warren Park improvements. This was an ordinance correction number. It was previously adopted as ordinance 2024-008, so that just replaces that 008 with 011, a corrected ordinance number. And lastly, revise 2024 meeting schedule. That is to simply add the July 3rd council briefing meeting to that meeting schedule for the year.
Very good. Any questions? Entertain a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Mr. Huffman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Sergeant Stringer, you have a presentation for us and an introduction.
Hope everybody's having a good week. Summertime is officially on us and starting back with our events and the heat, obviously. So, got a few stats, and then I'm going to introduce our new deputy that took Deputy Manning's place. He's been with us for about a month, so. 605 total calls for service for the month of May, 300 security checks, 25 traffic arrests, and 16 alarms. Still running about a five-minute response time for our priority calls. And you can see, we're down a little bit from last year at this time, 754 versus 442, 41. And then our alarms were at 15 last year, but still five minutes. So, not a lot of, not a lot of change, other than the total calls for service, and a lot of that is with those self-initiated security checks added in with them. Just a reminder for everybody that may be coming to the concerts or traveling through town that may be watching, so we're going to have lights. We are starting to utilize our lights. We've got a lot of pedestrian traffic, foot traffic coming around the square, coming in and out for concerts, so just remind everybody to kind of slow down. We're trying to utilize a couple deputies at each intersection to help people cross the crosswalks. So, those that may be coming to the events, try to, try to cross where there's deputies at. That's where they're there for. Use the crosswalks. So, try not to cross at the, at the old post office and, and right in the middle of North Street. So, trying to keep everybody safe. We've got it down to a science as far as letting everybody out, routing everybody down Bell Net to try to divert that, that car traffic away from the foot traffic. And it seems to work very well, but just everybody have patience, and we'll try to get you out of there as quick as we can. Wanted to introduce John Stevens. He lacks just about a month with about 16 years of law enforcement experience. He prior worked in Davie County, got, he has a lot of narcotics experience. So, he come over to the sheriff's office back in April, and he's been with us. He come right out of field training. We were able to get him over here in Lewisville when Deputy Manning took his new position elsewhere within the agency. So, John prefers to be called Cody, and I made a mistake, and I said, "So, your name is John Stevens? Why do we call you Cody?" And then I realized, he's like 6'8". I call him whatever he wants. We just don't question him. So, he's worked out very well. Happy to be here in Lewisville, so I'm going to bring him up and let him say a few words. But he'll be a great asset to the town, and working with town staff, you'll see him at the concerts, and so please make him feel at home.
Good evening, and thank you all for having me. I'm Cody Stevens, like you said. My name's John Henry Stevens. I go by Cody, so if anybody knows me, it's always Cody. Like Sergeant said, I've got a close 16 years of law enforcement experience. I've done everything from patrol supervisor, sergeant, CID detective, been in narcotics as a sergeant for a long time. But glad to be here, and I'm glad I got this spot in Lewisville, and look forward to working with all of you all and getting to know you all. Thank you all.
Welcome.
Thank you. Cody, glad to have you. As part of our exceptional deputy force that's out here.
Yes, sir.
As always, the council and staff is here to assist you, and all of our deputies and things that you might need, so please feel free to call on us.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you all.
If you have a question for Sergeant Stringer, please. Yes, Sergeant Stringer, with the heat coming up this summer, are there programs still around accessible for the elderly to get air conditioning? Have any information on that?
Not that I, not that I'm aware of. Typically, if any of that stuff comes out through the government, it's usually filtered down through emergency management and stuff like that. So, with that being said, if, if you're outside, you see your neighbors outside, and they're mowing the grass, check on them. I can't tell you how many heat-related injuries or deaths that we have. I mean, it happens. So, a lot of that just comes from being a good neighbor, checking on them, make sure that they get in the house safely. Don't, don't just assume that, that everybody's going to take a break, so we've got to look out for each other.
Thank you.
Anything else, council? All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be four opportunities to talk to council tonight. The first one will be our public forum coming up in just a few minutes. We'll have two in just a little bit that have to do with a public hearing on an annexation and also rezoning. And then we'll have a final opportunity at the end of the meeting for a final public comment session. So, if you're here to talk about the, if you're here to talk about the public hearings, please hold your comments until that time. Otherwise, is there anybody that wishes to address the council this evening on any matter that's of interest to you? I see no stir in the woods, so I'm assuming that, that there are no comments. There are also forums in the back of the room should you wish to leave a written comment and, and be part of the record. All righty. Stacy, you want to prep us for our first public hearing, please?
Sure. If you could press floor box 2, I believe it is. There we go. Well, it's, it's an old hat, but it's a planning hat, and I'll put it back on for a minute. So, tonight, before you, we have a rezoning request that is directly a reflection of an annexation request that we also have. So, the address is 2065 Glen Ferry Court. The case number is L109. So, again, for council consideration tonight, the first thing will be ordinance 2024-012. That will be a rezoning request contingent upon the annexation. That will directly follow that, ordinance 2024-013, for the actual request to extend our corporate limits to encompass that property. So, starting off with the rezoning request, you can see the property is outlined in yellow. It's also surrounded by a blue buffer. That blue buffer encompasses 500 feet. That is all the properties that we notify in the event of a rezoning request, also an annexation request, anything that has to go before a public hearing. That is the area in which we send letter notifications to. Properties also get posted, and then we also run ads in the newspaper. You can see the gray area is our current corporate limits, and so that would extend, if the rezoning is approved, and then also the annexation, that would extend to include this property as well. For the record, the property identified is 5887-32-3982. That is the tax parcel identification number. The request is to rezone the property from RS 30 for Forsyth County zoning to RS 30 for the town of Lewisville zoning jurisdiction. The planning board did have a public hearing on this and voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request to the town council at their April 10th, 2024 meeting. I will again note that this is contingent upon annexation approval. About the property, again requesting RS 30 zoning district, the minimum lot size for that zoning district is 30,000 square feet. That's not a change between Forsyth County and the town of Lewisville. This property is 1.67 acres. There is currently a single family residence on the property and is also served by private well and septic. It is accessed by private easement Glen Ferry Court, but that, that does not pose an issue for trash and recycling services, bulky item pickup, the additional services that this property would receive, would receive being in the town limits of Lewisville. The proposal is consent with the Lewisville Comprehensive Plan and the Forsyth County Legacy Plan. And so, tonight, I again recommend, staff recommends approval of this rezoning contingent upon that annexation request to follow.
Very good. Any questions for Stacy?
I have a question. When you showed the map, and there was the white parcels there in the county, we still send them to the individuals that are in the county, or do we just send the notices to?
We do, yes, yes. Regardless of the jurisdiction, we send it to everyone within, even if it's in a neighboring different county. Our ordinance requires everyone within 500, 500 feet. Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak this evening, either in support of or in opposition to? If so, please come up, state your name and address.
Good evening, council. My name is Brady Allen, and I am the petitioner on this request. I reside at the property that we're looking at, 2065 Glen Ferry Court. And I'll just start off by saying, throughout my childhood, I grew up in Lewisville. And then after, afterwards, I moved to Charlotte for four years to attend college, and moved back, actually, to Yadkinville during my college years. My parents moved to Yadkinville and lived with them for two years until I purchased this property. And given that, in comparison with Charlotte and Yadkinville and the various places that I've been to, seen, and lived, you know, Lewisville is a very special place, and it is a part of my culture. You'll find, find me oftentimes spending time at various places throughout the town, especially the coffee mill here in Lewisville. And so, I just want to state that and also request that you approve this rezoning for the annexation.
Very good.
Any questions for me? I'd like to take any questions that you may have.
If they have some, they'll ask them. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmembers, any discussion? If not, we'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
I do have, I have a question. It's at 1.76 acres.
1.67. With the tax card.
6.7. And an acre is typically about 40,000 square feet. Is that right?
43,560 square feet.
And what is the square footage, what was stated on this one?
And the minimum, the minimum lot size for the zoning district is 30,000 square feet.
Oh, the minimum, okay.
Yeah, so this parcel exceeds that minimum requirement.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Not council members, entertain a motion, please.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. That passes unanimously. And now, the second part.
Elliot, did you have something?
Mayor, I was just going to ask to clarify whether that motion would like to adopt the staff report's comments as a finding that the rezoning is consistent with the land use, the comprehensive plan, and otherwise reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I think the planner slash manager stated that it was consistent with, with legacy and also with our comp plan in her presentation. So, I'm not sure that needs to be part of the motion. Generally speaking, if we accept the, the staff member's report and the recommendation from the planning board, generally, we don't go back through and restate it, however we feel that it's a necessity for us to do that. We can certainly do it.
I don't have any problem amending the motion to reflect what Mr. Fuss just said.
It sounds like we have a sufficient record that council made such a finding.
Very good. All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Now, moving on to the annexation request.
Yes. Lastly, ordinance 2024-013 is the ordinance for the annexation. This request is to extend the corporate limits of the town of Lewisville to include this property located at 2065 Glen Ferry Court. Again, for the record, I will restate, the tax parcel number is 5887-32-3982. Now that the rezoning has been approved, contingent upon this annexation, if the annexation is approved, then the rezoning assigned will be RS 30 for the town of Lewisville zoning district.
Very good. Any questions for the manager slash planner? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak in support of or in opposition to the petition? If so, please come forward, state your name and address.
Again, my name is Brady Allen, 2065 Glen Ferry Court, and I'll just reiterate my comments made previously, and again, offer any questions to me.
Very good. Councilmembers, consideration? We'll entertain a motion, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Walsh makes the motion, Mr. Huffman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. And Mr. Allen, welcome to the town of Lewisville.
Welcome.
Stacy, I believe you have our first item of new business.
Yes. The new, first new business is ordinance 2024-001. This is the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget, and I do have a summarized budget message that I would like to read to you guys. As town manager, I am pleased to present the proposed general fund budget of $7,221,891 for fiscal year 2024-2025. This budget will allow us to maintain current service levels, plus allow us to continue working on all of the projects currently authorized by the town council. This budget, as proposed, is balanced with $387,586 in fund balance from the general fund. This fund balance appropriation represents the costs associated with projects that are not recurring operational cost. The budget as proposed includes a property tax increase from 17.7 cents per $100 of valuation to 21.7 cents. This represents an increase of 4 cents per $100 of valuation. 1 cent of the tax rate generates approximately $173,510 of revenue. The town's two largest expenses are the contract for solid waste and recycling collection with Waste Management and the contract for community policing with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department. The 4 cent increase in the property tax rate is necessary to fund these increases so that current service levels will be maintained for our residents. The town of Lewisville also collects a levy for the Willa Run Municipal Service District. Their current tax rate is 5 cents per $100 of valuation. The tax rate in the proposed budget is 10 cents per $100 of valuation, which represents an increase of 5 cents. The Lake Marblehead Dam requires significant repairs, and the MSD's current fund balance is insufficient to pay for the repairs. In order to reimburse the general fund in future years while still funding their current operating expenses, we deem it necessary to propose this increase of 5 cents to the tax rate. Over the years, the Lewisville Town Council has shown that it is fiscally prudent by saving up for big projects. There are several transportation projects in progress, including the Williams Road Gateway Project and the Roundabout at Lewisville-Viana Road and Robin Hood Road. The town also has a project underway funded by a grant from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund to make enhancements to Jack Warren Park. The improvements include a disc golf course and amphitheater and additional walking trails. In addition to these construction projects, we are currently working with a professional firm to update the town's unified development ordinance. With guidance from the town council and the planning board, this effort will update our ordinances and development regulations. This needed update will guide future development, keeping it compatible with the character of our wonderful town. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the mayor and town council for their vision and guidance as we work to develop a budget that will provide the resources to implement their policies and address community needs. I would like to convey my appreciation for the members of the community who have shared their thoughts and ideas, including those serving on the town's advisory boards and committees. Lastly, this budget could not have been prepared without the diligent efforts of the finance director and town staff. I would like to thank the entire team here at, at the town for their hard work and dedication in serving the residents of Lewisville. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmembers, any questions?
The budget represents a, how much percentage increase over the previous year?
Pam, it's not that number. 16.2%.
Thank you.
And I think if I'm correct, Pam, that our actual operations, excluding our contract with Waste Management, our contract with the Sheriff's Department, our actual operating budget is less than it was in last year's budget.
A little bit less, yes, that's right.
So, the, the increases that were reflected are simply the services that we receive and have to pass out on in some way to be able to continue the level of service that we have.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you. Any other comments? All righty. This is the big time. This is, this is the document that's going to guide us through this next year and our expenditures. And again, the budget is a reflection of the town vision, our priorities, and our philosophies. So, councilmembers, who would like to make the appropriate motion?
Move approval of the budget.
Second. Dr. Sadler makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The, we have five councilmembers in the affirmative and Mr. Huffman in the negative. Very good. And obviously, the budget passes. Thank you. Pam, I believe you have a series of items that are related to the action we just took.
That's correct. I'm going to handle the next four items. The budget that you just approved did not allow for any transfers to our capital reserves in the next fiscal year. As such, council will need to amend the, the related budget ordinance, the related capital reserve ordinances accordingly. So, I'll take them one at a time. First of all, we have ordinance 2024-014. This is amending the sidewalks, bike paths, and greenways capital reserve fund to suspend the annual contribution in fiscal year 2425.
Any questions for Pam? Entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Walsh makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Pam?
Next is ordinance 2024-015, amending the municipal buildings and land capital reserve to suspend the annual transfer in fiscal year 2425.
Any questions for Pam? Entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Huffman makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Next is ordinance 2024-016. This is amending the Public Works Facility Capital Reserve Fund to suspend the annual contribution in the fiscal year 2425.
Any questions for Pam? Entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
And lastly, ordinance 2024-017. This is amending the Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve Fund to suspend the annual contribution in fiscal year 2425.
Any questions for Pam? If not, entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
That stereo there, I'm not sure if it was Mr. Long or, or Mr. Huffman that kind of came at me. That, okay. Mr. Long makes the motion, I believe Ms. Hunt made the second.
So.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll just make one slight observation here. The actions we just took suspend our annual contributions to our capital project funds. Now, what that means is that our capital project funds are those funds, capital.
Reserves.
Reserve funds, thank you. I know, would probably be corrected over there. When I saw her wench, I knew I didn't have the right, right name. But needless to say, they serve the same purpose, which is that those are our savings accounts. And we traditionally put a certain amount of money in every year so that the opportunity comes forward to have money available, to take advantage of an opportunity or a project. We have that money available to us. It is alarming and certainly should be too sensitive for all of our attention that for the last several years, we have not contributed to those reserves, leaving us in a position where we don't have the resources that we once had to be able to move a number of projects forward. So, I'm hoping that this next year, when we face our budget, we can face our budget with a renewed enthusiasm for our savings account and be able to begin to put money back into those accounts again. Very good. And Stacy, let me echo your sentiments. Pam, your staff, everybody, thank you for your hard work on this. All righty, we have to collect the taxes, don't we?
Yes, sir, you do. The first ordinance before the council is ordinance 2024-018. That is an order for the Forsyth County Tax Office to collect the 2024 taxes.
Any questions? Entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you. The next ordinance before the council for your consideration is ordinance 2024-019.
This is an order for the Forsyth County Tax Office to collect 2023 and other prior year taxes on behalf of the town of Louisville.
Any questions for Dora?
Quick question.
Entertain a motion, please.
Quick question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Dora, how much does the county charge and what is our percentage of collection?
They charge 1% of the actual amount collected in property tax.
And we collect about what percentage of our taxes are actually collected?
We end up paying usually about $40,000 in collection fees.
What's our collection rate?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's almost 100%.
Thank you.
It's just under 100%.
And we know who that just under 1% is.
Just one house.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. John, you have a chance to take a swing at us.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't catch who made the motion and second to that one.
Ms. Hunt made the motion, Dr. Sadler made the second.
That was the 2024 collection of taxes.
Well, then we better back up. There you go. So we'll entertain a motion, I guess.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Long makes the motion, Ms. Walsh makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor for a second time, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All righty, John, now you're up.
Okay, well, this group of resolutions before you has to do with ongoing maintenance and service contracts for the town that were contingent upon the budget passing. Resolution 2024-026 awards janitorial service contract to executive cleaning service for the work they do at Jack Warren Park, Shaliford Square Park, the Town Hall Annex, and the Galloway Reynolds Community Center. This is a three-year contract with a roughly 3% planned increase per year. Resolution 2024-27 is with, or 027 is with executive cleaning service as well, and this is for the services provided, janitorial services provided at Town Hall here in this building. It's a three-year contract as well, also with a roughly 3% increase each year built into it. Resolution 2024-028 is
Pause just for a second so we don't outrun our motions and seconding. Any questions for John on our first maintenance contract? And that is with for Jack Warren Park, Shaliford Square, and Town Hall Annex and G. Galloway Reynolds Community Center? If not, entertain a motion, please.
Move approval.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. On John's second proposal for janitorial services for Town Hall, any questions for John? Entertain a motion, please.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the same company, John?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Executive Cleaning, okay, thank you.
Question also, please. John, how many years have we had that company and how many different, do you go out for, you know, requests for the amounts? In other words, how many?
This company has been providing these services for several years at this point. I don't know exactly how many. I think we bid it out. Pam, do you remember the last time we bid these services out?
I don't know that for sure. I think quotes were, it might have been back in about 2021 or 2022, new quotes were, we went out, since these are three-year contracts, right? We had gone out previously and looked for new bids, and executive cleaning always came under as the lowest bid.
Okay, thank you.
Executive has been a really solid performer and has given us a lot of value for the last few years, so we have been extremely satisfied with their services.
Thank you.
Very good. And I guess I'll remind us that when we, during COVID, when we set up a remote learning center over in G. Galloway Reynolds Center, this particular cleaning company donated the cleaning supplies and all of the things that they needed to make that a safe place for students to go and learn. So we're, I agree, John, they've been a great partner for us. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion.
Why not?
That was the last one.
Going fast.
Motion. I should just wait till I have a motion and a second to have the questions, because that's what throws me off.
Marty just made the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Long makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Now, is there any discussion? If not, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Okay, John, now we're off to the horticultural maintenance contract.
Okay. Resolution 2024-028 awards the contract to Hoosier Horticulture for our, essentially for our beautification services. This is a one-year contract. Resolution 2024-02
I'm going to pause you just for a second. Any questions for John on our horticultural maintenance contract?
So, could you just sort of, it's such a big number. Can you sort of outline exactly the extent of services, where they occur and so forth?
Yes, sir, this would be, this would be everything essentially that's not mowing that happens on town-maintained properties. So it's all the, everything shrub and tree-related, it's all the beautification that goes on in any flower beds, it's maintenance of Jack Warren Park, all the vegetation and everything out there. One of the things that this one also takes on is the new territory out at Gateway, at the project there, the median down Williams Road, the trees and plants and mulch and everything in there, as well as the landscape, the beautification, the landscape beds at the new welcome signs. This, you know, stretches, I'm not sure how many different properties, but this is essentially everything that's not mowing.
Okay. And how often do they actually go on to the various sites to do whatever they do?
They're in the major sites, I would say, weekly. There may be some, some of the outlier sites that they're not at weekly, and this includes everything, you know, also all the mulch, all the pine straw. I know one of the, one of the numbers that we've seen this year is it's roughly 3,000 bales of pine straw that's included in this number, the purchase and distribution of that. And so there's a, you know, they get, making sure that the square is presentable for our event season and things like that, and making sure it's presentable again for tree lighting and that everything looks right for the parade. They do the little beds on the side of Shaliford Road and make sure that the street trees are clear for pedestrians and make sure that lights are safe. So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of little things that go into this as well.
Yeah, John, is irrigation included in that?
No, ma'am, there's not any irrigation included in that. Those are, those are little, we as a staff do most of what would be programming and management of what irrigation goes on, and then we have a, an irrigation subcontractor that does any repairs that need to be taken care of. We do kind of work with both of these horticultural contractors when we need to make adjustments or when things need to happen differently, but they don't, they don't do any management or work on our irrigation systems.
Any other questions?
I do. You mentioned Shaliford Square, do they maintain the turf there? Like?
No, that would be the next contractor in the next resolution, which would be the Yards By Us Lawn Masters.
Okay, but they do maintain the roundabout there at the Foo Lion with the
Yes.
Okay. There, I've had a couple residents mention to me that when the grass gets to a certain height, it's hard for them to see as they're coming around the roundabout.
Right.
So if you'll just kind of relay that information back to the contractor, that'd be great.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, there's also a reason for a certain height, particularly if you're entering the roundabout from one side with your lights on and coming in from the other side. The height needs to be a certain level so you're not facing bright lights as you're into that circle.
Yeah, I think it's when they're coming, they're mentioned when they're coming from 421 into town.
Splitter Island there. It's not the
It's not the actual roundabout, yeah.
It's not the roundabout, it's the triangular splitter island that some people are saying they can't see past. We actually, as an aside, we had a, we had an onsite visit with DOT engineers out there last year and actually did some measurements. We pushed some grasses out, we took some things out, that some of the stuff that you'll see planted along Lucy Lane now, the little islands in Lucy Lane, are a lot of the grasses that we transplanted out of there so that, so that we could open up some of those sightlines a little bit better.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for John? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Huffman makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. John, you're in the home stretch.
Resolution 2024-029 awards the ground maintenance contract to Lawn Masters, which is also Yards By Us. This is essentially the mowing that happens in our right-of-ways. They do the interchange out at 421, they do the mowing in the parks, they do the mowing of the turf here and Shaliford Square. Ms. Hunt, going back to your question about who's managing that turf over there, that's who is doing this. They also do, we do regular mowing of the dams out at the, out at the Willow Run MSD. They take care of that stuff for us, as well as those guardrails and everything out there. And then when we have calls about unkept lots in the town that are in violation of maintenance regulations, anytime we need to send somebody to mow those areas, then they take care of that on a per-hour basis. And this is a one-year contract as well.
Very good. Any questions?
Just for consistency, this contract and the next, it probably would, I would think it might be helpful just to indicate the dollar amount associated with these contracts as has been done with the others.
Okay, in the resolution, I have, so we don't have that listed on our, on our agenda, but in the resolution we do. And if you'd like to know that, would you, is that a point of kind of paperwork, or would you like to know those numbers?
No, I'd just like to make sure, for consistency purposes, when you look at the document, so that nobody's wondering why those numbers aren't here when the others are.
I'm curious of the number.
Well, the number with this particular resolution, 029, with Yards By Us, the, what we call Area 1, which is the greater package of all the mowing that goes on, is The mowing of the MSD dams, which we're only going to do twice a year coming up, is $1,800 per visit for $3,600 a year. The MSD guardrails, which are those along the roadways that cross the dams, which would be Chesterfield and Falmouth, mowing those guardrails, that happens eight times per year for, I think, $55 apiece, that makes it $440 a year. And the per-man hour price for the unkept lot visits or any other services is $65 an hour.
Great, thank you.
I do have a question for you, John. Speaking of the unkept lots, is that a cost that the town incurs and retains, or is that something that the property owners therefore build for? I just don't know, and I'm just curious.
May I ask Stacy Tolbert to put her planner hat back on?
Yeah, I can answer that question. Thank you, Evan. We, what we do is whenever we get invoiced for the actual cost of, when, we go through a notice of violation process, when that process is done, we send them a final letter, go through everything that we're supposed to go through with the town code, send out Yards By Us to mow that, and then they will invoice the town. So what we do is we then in turn send an invoice to the property owner with the cost of the mowing plus a $50 fine for a violation of the ordinance. So it, we do invoice them, it's actually pretty rare that we get paid back for that, but the property owners are invoiced based on whatever the cost of mowing was by Yards By Us per hour, how many hours it took them to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You do make them aware of the need
Yes.
To cut the grass
Right.
To better maintain the property.
Yeah.
And we do retain the right to lien the property if they don't pay, is that correct?
I believe that is correct, sir.
That was my question.
You just haven't done that.
That was my question. I was wondering if they didn't pay, if the town put lien against the property.
Usually it's $90 or it might be a little over $100. I think the most we've ever really had was like $150 or $175 for a really bad lot that they may have had to bush hog.
Right. But is it repetitive in nature, or is it a one-time kind of deal?
There's probably about three properties that are repetitive in nature, others are, you know, just kind of how life happens sometimes, but generally those comply and we do not have to invoice those.
Other questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So it mentions maintenance, but it sounds like the majority of it is mowing.
Correct, it was lawn maintenance is kind of how we categorize it.
That's the category, so, okay. So when we're talking about Shaliford Square, and there's some areas by the brick wall that, like where we do the Christmas tree lighting and rain, there's some drainage, it feels like there's some drainage things going on. I know it seems to be always holding water after rain, irregardless of how much rain we have. Is that something that they would be taking care of, or is that something that we'd have to look into, the drainage and?
That's something that we would sort of address and plan and, or look at, plan, address as staff and as a separate project that would kind of need to be, you know, that would, that would need to be, I guess, planned and bid or priced, and then we'd probably use a subcontractor to do that kind of thing. There's a, there is a, I wouldn't say a significant drainage problem that you're talking about in that area that does need some attention. Our question, kind of more recently, has been, does that kind of get packaged into more of an overall revitalization of the park as a whole, or do we treat that as a single, you know, fix that needs to be done otherwise, you know?
Thank you, I'm just curious, thank you.
Yeah, we currently have a request before the North Carolina Legislature that would include a significant amount of money for Shaliford Park renovations and improvements, and that would be, that would be part of that, because you're right, this has been an issue for a long time.
Great, thank you, ma'am.
All righty, any other questions? If not, I don't think there's been a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Huffman makes the second. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. We're preparing for snow and ice, should we ever have it again.
Should we ever have it again? Yes, sir, this is, this Resolution 2024-030 awards a three-year contract to Yeah.
Spee's.
It's the name.
Spee's Lawn Care.
Spee's Lawn Care, I'm sorry, y'all couldn't find it. There it is, okay, sorry. Like I said, this is a three-year contract. We did some, they've worked with us, with the town for a long time, and they are essentially the town's sole, or we are their sole customer when it comes to snow and ice removal, and so we've, you know, we've worked with these guys for a while, we did some, we did some kind of some massaging to this agreement a little bit this year to kind of, really to account for the fact that it's been really hard for them to prepare for snows that don't come and for, and to keep their, all of their equipment and everything maintained in a state of readiness year after year, and it doesn't get used. And so we, you know, we did a few things differently here, but this is a three-year contract. You'll see it's got a small increase in the per-truck hour over the, over the course of the three years. And the, one of the biggest things that changed about this is that there would essentially be, at the end, if we go through another year that has no snow events or no deployable events that add up to at least a day of paid work, then we pay these, then we have agreed to pay what he referred to as a retainer, but I think it could be categorized differently to kind of help compensate them for the, for just how much they have to do with all this equipment all year long to maintain it and keep it up whether it snows or not. And these guys essentially being locked into us as a provider whether they get to work or not. And so, are there any questions about that?
Where do they get their salt from? What do they, do they bring the salt?
Well, that's a, that's a thing that's sort of in a state of flux as well, but traditionally it has come from the state, and it's come from the county maintenance yard up there, kind of off Polo over there, I think that's Craft Drive. And so that's our, that's our preliminary and primary source. There's been a little bit of, a little bit of back and forth about that lately because it's gotten a little bit harder for the state to procure, so they're a little bit tighter with what they're, what they're willing to give out, but those are some, maybe that's a discussion that we do need to have sometime.
Anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Pam, you want to let us know how we're drawing down our American Rescue Plan funds?
Yeah, just a little bit of history. In 2021, the US government passed the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, and the town of Louisville did receive ARPA funding in the amount of $4,024,471. And since 2021, we've been using that money to reimburse our general fund for the cost of general government services, specifically salaries and benefits. And so we're getting ready to go into our last fiscal year where we'll get that, or start using up our ARPA money. I'm predicting that at the start of the next fiscal year, which will be July 1st, that we'll have about $390,000 of ARPA funding left to use. And so what I'm asking council to do tonight is to amend the grant project ordinance to budget for that $390,000 to be used for salaries and benefits in the next fiscal year. And that is Ordinance 2024-020.
Any questions for Pam? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
I'm going to use discretion. Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good, we have a tie on making the motion, so I thought I'd split it between the two motion makers.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear Melissa, so I'm sorry.
All righty, just got to be quicker, Monty, and beat these guys out. All righty, Dora, we have an appointment to make.
Yes, sir. Before the council, for your consideration, is Appointment 2024-003. This is to appoint a representative to the Tri-Autumn Municipal Alcoholic Beverage Control System Board. This is a three-year term. Our current board member is Ed Smith. He is eligible for a second term and has requested to serve. So before you is a request to appoint him for an additional three-year term.
Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion, only appointment, please.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Huffin makes the motion, Mr. Long got it in that time?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a little bit off, but on from, about Mr. Smith. But Pam, would you tell us, how much does the town get in monies from our ABC store?
We have budgeted, we have budgeted about $274,000 to receive next year.
Awesome, thank you.
Very good, any other questions? If not, I'm sorry. Somebody say something, Pam. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Stacy, we have our Plemons Road returned.
Yes.
By the way, thank you, Mr. Smith, for serving. You've served us with distinction over the last couple of years, and we look forward to your servicing into the town.
Thank you, Ed. Council, tonight before you is Ordinance 2024-021. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has requested the town take over maintenance of 265 feet of Plemons Road. That is outside of our town limits, but is a dedicated public right-of-way. The portion to be maintained will be added to Lewisville's POW bill system, and this ordinance is approved, accepts maintenance now of the entire Plemons Road, even inside of our jurisdiction, and then that 265 feet outside of our jurisdiction.
Very good, any questions for the manager?
The acceptance of this segment of the road doesn't create any particular issues for the town, right?
No, this is a gravel road, again, only 265 feet, so we don't anticipate really any, any major increased costs when gravel is laid on the road.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Just really a clarification, manager. So we're currently on both sides of that gravel, right? So we're already serving, or servicing both sides, we just got to fill in the little middle part.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
The last end, if you'll recall, there was an annexation. That small portion was abandoned and kind of absorbed into a residential lot. But what we're currently servicing for Plemons Road, again, yes, you're correct, is in our jurisdiction, and then this little piece, that 265, is in between, right in between our boundaries.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All righty, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion? Second.
Hunt makes the motion, Ms. Walsh makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Our items that we've added this evening, I think, are one that we can celebrate with accomplishment and congratulate our town manager for the successful conclusion and negotiation of the purchase of a piece of property that is going to enhance the town and our ability to serve our residents. Stacy, do you want to give us a little background, and then we'll take the items that we need to do?
Sure, so the next three items pertain to the purchase of property located at 6524 Shalford Road. In order to enter into a purchase agreement or contract, if you will, with the selling party in the coming days and weeks, the next items must be in place prior to a contract to being signed. So what we have prepared for you is the next three items, P, Q, and R, to take care of budget amendments and transfers and everything in order to make that purchase happen prior to a contract being able to be signed. So if we will, Mayor, with your direction, I'd like to turn over those next three items, P, Q, and R, to our finance director, and she can explain those next three items to you.
Okay, all of you should have a piece of paper in front of you. At the top, it says Ordinance 2024-022. If you'll pull that out. 24-022.
I do not.
Do not have that.
I've got 014 and 020.
Here you go.
I now have 022.
Everybody's got it? Okay. As the manager said, before she can be allowed to actually sign a contract, we actually have to have the money in a budget. And so this is what Ordinance 2024-022 will do. It will establish a capital project ordinance called Public Works Facility. The project authorized is the purchase or construction of a public works facility. And as you can see in the first box, what we're doing, or what we're proposing, is an initial budget for construction, and that's just a generic term, construction purchase, it's all the same for purposes here, an initial budget of $1 million. This includes the purchase price of $700,000, and then we've allowed an extra $300,000 for any future renovations, improvements, that type thing that might occur. Of course, this is a multi-year project, so this is a project that can carry on for many years. So basically, we can kind of take our time making improvements to the building with this particular budget. We propose to fund this budget in the second section below with the transfer from the Public Works Facility Capital Reserve Fund, which of course is our savings account for this particular purpose. Right now, it has a balance of $899,325.47. And shortly, I'm going to recommend that you go ahead and close that capital reserve and transfer the entire balance into this capital project. And then the balance would be paid from any transfers from the general fund as needed.
Very good.
I would just add, Mayor and council, that even though we're setting up this project, again, with it being a project, we can, it can span multiple years, so it's not like something has to be done at the end of a fiscal year, like it normally is in our operating budget. But anything that would be expenditures out of this fund would still come before council prior to those, any renovations or anything like that. This is just to set up that fund.
Yes, ma'am.
So once we set up the fund, we have to use the monies for that particular project, is that correct?
No, it's flexible. If you do not use all of the money, then you can actually transfer it to another project.
We can put it back in general fund.
You cannot send it back to the general fund, no. It always has to be used for a capital project.
So could, could we, instead of transferring, I guess my question is, why the extra $100,674 coming out of general fund now versus could we put that in next fiscal year?
Well, keep in mind, this is just an overall budget for a multi-year project. Before we would actually, before we would move any money from the general fund, we would actually need to have that money. So in the next fiscal year, or even the one after that, if we don't need that $100,000, we will not ask for the transfer.
Okay.
It's just there, we were trying to come up with a good budget number.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, so there will be no transfer from the general fund until it comes back to town council for approval.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Very good, then let's, let's take these one at a time. The first one is Ordinance 2024-022, and that's establishing our Public Works Facility Capital Project Fund.
Move approval.
Second. Dr. Sadler makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So it says capital projects ordinance, is that different than fund? Should it say fund?
No, it, whenever you, whenever you establish a capital project, you do it by ordinance. And so that's why it's called a capital project ordinance. But yes, it is establishing a capital project fund. So with the financial statements, it'll be called a fund, but it's established by ordinance.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion, please.
Well, we've already got a motion.
That's right, we did. Any discussion?
Sorry.
All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous also. The second ordinance we need to take a look at is the closeout of our Public Works Facility Capital Reserve Fund, not to be confused with ordinance.
Exactly, yeah. So it currently has, like I said, has a current balance of $899,325.47. So I propose with this particular ordinance that we close that reserve and transfer the money into the newly created capital project.
Any questions? Entertain a motion, please.
Second.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion, after a poignant pause. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion?
I'll just comment here, it's probably well-known, but just so that it's clear, the money that's actually in this fund has been saved for this purpose over the years. And it's what the mayor refers to as our savings accounts. And so we have these reserves in place in anticipation of needs that we might encounter in the future, and this has actually provided an opportunity that we didn't really foresee until it presented itself, which is coming up next. But in any event, this is not new money that we're spending that impacts the budget in any way. This is money that was saved over the years for this particular purpose.
Thank you, Dr. Sadler, for that explanation. I think it really is relevant, because we don't make, we don't make contributions to those savings accounts, and we don't have money to do things with when opportunities do present themselves. Thank you very much. Any other discussion?
Mayor, and just a clarification, this one was created recent, in 2021?
Yeah, it's only been around a couple of years, and we actually established it with our ARPA money. I think it was $835,000 of ARPA money that we actually put into the capital reserve to begin with, and then just investment earnings on top of that, it's grown.
And I'll just piggyback on both of y'all's, both comments there is how essential it is that we continue as a town when we're moving forward, that we're designating specific project funds, ordinances, whatever they may be called, savings accounts, so that we can do things, just as Dr. Sadler mentioned, and Mayor. So very, very good job councils, and prior councils, on creating these funds.
Very good, any additional discussion? We have a motion in a second. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. And now we get to spend the money. Stacy?
Oh, hold on just a minute, I've got one more. We haven't done the next one, 24, haven't done R yet.
We haven't done 24, that's right, we just did 23, okay.
Okay, so capital reserve funds, those are annually budgeted. So since we're talking about doing a transfer from the reserve to the capital project, we have to amend the current year budget ordinance. So we have Ordinance 2024-024. This is to amend the Budget Ordinance 2023-001 to transfer the balance of $899,325.47 in the Public Works Facility Capital Reserve Fund to the Public Works Facility Capital Projects Fund.
Very good. And if anybody's having any questions or confusion, as your mayor has so amply demonstrated on these, between public funds and reserve accounts and ordinances and funds, please address those questions to our finance manager, who I'm sure will be glad to spend a lot of time explaining those to you. Any questions? Very good, we will entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Now, Stacy?
All right. Next is Resolution 2024-031. The purpose of this resolution is to authorize the town manager to sign documents necessary to complete the purchase of the property located at 6524 Shalford Road, and I will mention the purchase price for the property is $700,000.
Very good. Again, this will authorize our manager to go ahead and begin developing the contract, present the contract, and take us to a closing. Any questions?
Just for clarity, that is the old post office, correct?
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
And we're going, we'll be going through a period of due diligence, is that what's going to happen?
Yes, yes, mhm, yep. We are currently starting to work on purchase agreement contract documents that would be either a 60- or 90-day due diligence period to give us the opportunity to have an inspection done, title searches, and everything associated with that closing.
All right, any other questions?
Was there any earnest money requirement?
There was not.
Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Walsh makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All righty, admin reports, Ms. Manager.
All right, so the fun continues at Shalford Square. Lewisville's 10th Annual Street Party and Food Truck Festival will take place on Saturday, June 22nd, from 6:00 to 9:00. Stacy Howard has worked very hard on this and has 20 food vendors scheduled to participate. So the Band of Oz will also be joining us to provide beach music entertainment for the evening on June 22nd. Later in June is the Special Independence Day Tribute Concert at the square on Saturday, June 29th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Jim Quick and Coastline will be performing along with the tribute by the American Legion Post 522. Lastly, town offices will be closed on Thursday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day. I'll add trash and recycling services for Thursday and Friday routes will be delayed one day due to that closure. And then as always, for more information, you can visit lewisvillenc.net.
Very good, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what I'm doing tonight, I'm talking a lot. But anyways, I wanted to just see if staff would be willing to communicate to residents. Sergeant Stringer mentioned a little bit about heat-related incidents, you know, and that type of thing, prior to these, to these events, if there can be some form of communication, just basic reminders. We did have a situation at our last event where we had to have EMS called, so I just want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence as a town to make sure that residents are aware of heat-related situations.
Absolutely, we can mention that.
Thank you.
All righty, anything else for the manager?
That's all.
Clucks report.
So the next CPR class will be August 10th at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. It will be held from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. We do still have some availability, so individuals who would like to take this class can email Vleasure, that's V-L-E-A-S-U-R, at lewisvillenc.net to register for the CPR class.
Very good, thank you. All righty, ladies and gentlemen, we have arrived at the opportunity for a second public forum. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to come forward and address the council, this is a great time to do it. Yes, ma'am, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Susan Fry, 165 Will Austin Court. Just something occurred to me, and I'm wondering how we can get information on this, the Great Wagon Road project, which is, I guess, moving along. And how do we find out, is there something online that will tell us what, we have some beautiful trees on Shalford and on the Great Wagon Road, and what's going to happen to those trees? Do we know what's going to be taken down, if they're going to be replaced? And, you know, I'm a little concerned about what's going to happen to all those, the trees around the park and all the way down, you know, Shalford. I don't, haven't found anything online, even with DOT, as to what the plans are, and if they're taking trees down, are they going to be replaced? So it's kind of a concern, and I'd like to see if there's some way to get that information out there on the website, or from, you know, from DOT or something. That's all, thank you.
And we do have our engineering drawings, but they're a little complicated.
They are.
For most people to kind of, I have difficulty, as one might suspect, reading them. I wonder if there's a way we can do a simplified version. Susan, to address, I think your big concern, yes, once we start that project, there will be a lot of regular communication that's going out about, it's going to be a phased project, where we'll start, where we'll be moving, how it'll progress through the course of probably a year and a half of construction. But if we could do a simplified map of the GWR, and so folks can see where it's going to run, and maybe figure out a way to put that up on our website, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, you want to know something before it's too late.
Yeah. I mean, clearly, there's going to be some loss of trees, just basically, it's a roadway. But I think your point's well taken, it'd be great if our residents knew exactly where it was going to go and how it was going to happen. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Counsel comments? Any thoughts?
Couple of things, just curious about EV charging. Do we have an update on how much that's getting utilized?
We do get a monthly report. I don't know that we have gotten one, we did get one for May. Yeah, our revenue's running about $100 a month off of that. I did see, I have, I, you know, occasionally do see them being utilized, and I think they were being utilized at our most recent event on Saturday night. I did see cars parked there and charging, so hopefully they're, that word is getting out.
Yeah, great. Planner recruiting, what's the status?
We have, the job application has been posted in a couple of different locations, and we have received some applications, and so we hope to enter into interview process very soon.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Just two quick items, if I could, council members. The, as I mentioned, I think, in an email to you, we did want to do an allocation of our points for the prioritization of projects. Since we don't have any projects in this next upcoming prioritization, we had an opportunity to build some goodwill, and in fact, we did that. We contacted the North Carolina Department of Transportation, our Division 9, and they, they said their projects were pretty well-funded, or point-wise, from a prioritization standpoint. Then we did reach out to some of our municipalities who had projects in the works, and the town of Bermuda Run said, "Yes, please, we would love to be able to apply your points to the widening of 801." So we have some very gracious and appreciative communities across the river, who hopefully we can use their points. Certainly, we weren't going to use them, so maybe it'll advance their cause and help their transportation project as well. The second thing, and council members, with your just acknowledgement and acceptance, I would like to swap two appointments that we made at the beginning of the year. One was to the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, and one was to our Administrative Committee. With the agreement of our two members, I'd like to move Mr. Long to PTRC and move Ms. Hunt to the Administrative Council. A couple of reasons, one, Mr. Long is a stone's throw away from where they meet, and the other one is Ms. Hunt has been working closely with, with our manager, and developing some helpful tips on how to stay organized. So I think the blending of the two, it makes a really good time to make those moves. If there are no objections, we'll go ahead and let the minutes reflect that those appointments have been made.
Is that consequences? Okay. Thank you.
Council members, anything else? Alrighty. Once again, folks, thanks for... Every municipality gets points that they apply to projects that they've submitted as part of this cycle of project requests. And so, we can put points on projects to elevate their chance of getting, getting funded. Well, we didn't have any, any projects in this cycle, this round of projects, so we're going to use our points to help Bermuda Run.
These being NC DOT projects, correct?
This would be, let's see, I think the 801 widening would be an NC DOT project, yeah.
And they're all projects that are, encompass our Winston-Salem Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. That is an organization that the town of Louisville is a part of, along with other municipalities, the county, City Winston-Salem, Kernersville, that, that all enter into that kind of same pot of funding that we get for all of our transportation projects. So it, it's a prioritization of how many points they get based on whether projects get funded or not.
And to, excuse me, borrowing an expression from Don Corleone, at some point, at some point in the future, I'm going to come and ask you for a favor, and we'll see how that works out over in Bermuda Run. Anything else this evening? Once again, folks, thanks for being here, folks, thanks for watching at home. Always a pleasure for you to take in the town government. If there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion, please. So moved. Mr. Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Long makes the second. Any discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned.